You know, for a number of years. Um, TeamWorks, the company, um, we have rebranded ourselves. We really focus on governance, management and engagement. Um, and all kinds of solutions around those areas. So tonight, we're talking a lot about governance and management. Talking about it from the school board and the leadership team perspective. But we do board trainings, professional development, professional growth. Uh, we do the same thing for leadership teams in the management arena. We do executive coaching for school board chairs, for school board members, superintendents. And then we also do a lot of work in the engagement. Um, so we.
That was right there, that sign in sheet.
Just in Minnesota or throughout the upper Midwest?
United States. Yep. So we've been in twenty states, over four hundred districts. Um, we do public processes around engagement. So when we do things like boundary changes, facility processes, we help facilitate that.
These are still warm, so.
Grab like more.
Yeah.
Yeah. True.
There you go.
Grab the whole plate.
And then, um, specifically at Marshall, we, when we did our strategic planning process, we touched on all three areas. So we had some governance work with the board. Management team was doing the operational plan. We had engaged, uh, students, families and staff around what they wanted to see for desired daily experience. So Marshall's kind of touched all those arenas in our time together.
I did forget to mention too, we are recording the meeting, just for if anyone wants to watch later, so.
Okay. So that's who we are. Um, one unique thing about TeamWorks, um, for thirty years, we, we not marketed, we not sold. So everybody that we work with is by referral. Um, usually what happens is you'll see a, a dot on the map with the school district that we're working in. And then you'll start to see a bunch of pins around that. Superintendents are talking and saying, you know, get TeamWorks to do the work. So that's who we are. Other than the last thirty seconds, we don't advertise, but that was kind of. Um, tonight, what we want to do is just touch on governance, management and consultation or engagement, three authorities. And, um, talk about how that fits into the school board role and, um, how, how things work together. So, um, our system is called Education Leadership System. It's just a title for how does governance, management and consultation work in partnership? We created a system that we'll talk about for this work. So usually we do a little formal thing, but since we have a small group. Um, when you see the word governance, what, what are some words that come to mind? What do you, what would you say describes governance? Just from what you know today.
I think municipality is what comes to my mind.
Any ideas?
Um, an entity to, um, guide and direct, I guess.
Good. How about management? What do you think of when you see management?
I think leadership. Training.
Good.
Utilizing the re- uh, utilizing the resources or an organization.
Okay. And then lastly, consultation or I would put slash engagement on that.
Words jump out here on that.
Yeah, it's more of your, and what, what you're doing is consultation, consulting, um, just to, yeah, your entity coming in.
Good. Listening to people.
Yes, with the slash, slash engagement, um, reaching out to others to get them engaged in a process.
Yeah. And so we're going to talk about those. Um, you guys are touching on all key components of that. You didn't know you were going to be on hot seats tonight, right? So we won't, we won't, we'll ask Jeremy all the hard questions. Matt, some of the moderate ones, I just take the easy ones. So. So our education leadership system, we, we have six groups of adults that are affiliated with the school district. And those are represented on the left-hand side. You have the school board, you have the superintendent, district administrators, your students and staff, parents and public. And so those folks represent the adults affiliated with the district. On the right-hand side, those groups operate when what we call the authorities. So the board is the only one in governance, superintendent in the district. The ones in management and student staff, parents and public are your consultation or engagement. In that system, there are the, the board and the superintendent, district administrators. They operate from what we call a district interest first. So their job is to lift up and look at what's best for the district. And your students and staff, parents and public, they're going to operate from what we call a self-interest. So as a parent, I'm going to advocate for my kid, right? Or if I'm a staff member, I'm going to advocate for my school or my public. That's self-interest. Whereas Jeremy and the leadership team have to look at it as a district perspective. Same thing with the school board. And arguably, it takes a little more effort to do the district interest. Um, because it's pretty easy to self-advocate, you know. And TeamWorks, our goal is to help boards. So one of the things I don't want you to take away from tonight is that this governance thing is a sandbox that the board lives in. And management is a sandbox that the administration lives in, and they don't play well, they don't play together. That's not what I'm saying at all. They have to actually interplay very much in order to be successful. And what we do at TeamWorks is try to help teams enhance that relationship or partnership so that they work well together. So this is a, um, a graphic of the education leadership system, or affectionately known as ELS. What I do is just kind of talk around the ovals. Hit on a couple of highlights. Um, and again, I'm sorry, what was your first name?
Timothy.
Timothy. If you have questions as we go, just stop me. So we don't have to wait to the end or anything, you just stop me. So we're going to start over here at the school board. We're just going to kind of work our way around. Um, all authority for governing school districts is granted per statute to a publicly elected school board. So every state in the United States is, is the same. So statutes provide that authority to a school board. Some states, they call them Board of Education. Out east, they call them the school committee. It's all effectively the same. There's a group that's elected that governs the school district. What's unique about school board members is that they're the only elected official. Um, uh, in the state and, and federally, that is actually elected as a governing board member. There's no other public entity that has a governing board. So that means that city council, your county commissioners, your, um, state and, um, federal senators and representatives. They're all have elements of management. But in school districts, there's no management in the, in the job of governing. And what's hard about that as a board member is the public doesn't know the difference. The public generally knows what city council. City council members do. And so they look at a governing board as the school council. And so that's why, you know, if you're on the board and, and Matt can affirm this, you get calls like, the lights on the football field were left on past ten o'clock, you, you need to go turn them off. Matt doesn't have keys, he can't, you know, he's not, he doesn't know how to turn them off, but they think Matt, or chair is running the district. And so it's a really interesting nuance to be able to communicate to your public the role of what a governing board is. A single board member can have all the greatest ideas in the world, but you can't get your idea done until you get the board. Cause you don't have individual authority. As a matter of fact, the only time the board has authority is when they are in session in quorum. So board members have lots of responsibility, no authority in the district. So it's a quorum-based governing board unlike any other publicly elected official, um, that we experience.
What's the rebuttal to that then? So you, you're on the school board and you can't get anybody to turn the damn lights off?
Well, Matt would call Jeremy.
I would call Jeremy or Warren or somebody that knows what.
Yeah.
Yep.
You are, but you are managing at that point.
Well, you're handing it off. You know, I, I, I use the lights thing because it's kind of a simple thing. But if it's a more complex issue and, and, and someone calls Matt and says, um, I'm having a problem with my teacher, my kid's teacher. And I know that doesn't happen in Marshall. Was that?
The more common call.
Right.
Or a coach.
Or a coach.
Yeah, coaches are very common.
So Matt would say.
Chain of command.
Matt would say something like, um, as a governing board member, I don't have any authority, but I want to make sure you have access to how to solve your problem. So have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked to the principal? Have you talked to the teaching and learning director? Have you talked to Jeremy? So we, we redirect. But it put, it makes board members kind of feel like you're, you're, you're not problem solvers. You're not in it with them, right? You're, you're redirecting. And so that's where this relationship between superintendent and the board is really important. Great, great question. Any, any other questions around the governance? So far? Okay, so the board then by design delegates all management authority to the superintendent. So the board delegates the authority to manage the school district to the superintendent. But they don't abdicate the responsibility. So the board has one employee, superintendent. And the superintendent has every other employee in the school district. So as a board, you're delegating the management authority to run the district to the superintendent. And then Jeremy, to the degree that's necessary for the size of the organization, hires other administrators, other principals. Um, who then hire teachers to be able to deliver, um, deliver on education. In order to be a superintendent in the state of Minnesota and any, any other state for that matter, you have to have a license. Minnesota says you have to have a license to be a superintendent. Actually, you have to have a license to be a principal. You have to have a license to be a teacher, a license to be a community education director, special education director. So any of those roles, the state mandates you have to have a license. So arguably, boards can't do work of a superintendent or a principal because you're not licensed. Now, some board members are, have a license because they might be a former teacher or a former principal. But the board can't do superintendent work because the board's not licensed and board members should have a license to do that work. So the state says to do superintendent work, you have to have a license. Principals, you have to have a license. And so whenever I advise boards, whenever you're feeling like you're doing superintendent work, you're probably stepping over the, the line of into management. And I'll say one more thing and then I'll come back and talk about the interaction of governance and management further. This is a TeamWorks thing that we say that district administrators and principals have to be district-wide leaders first. And building or department managers second. So when the administrative team comes together in this room at the district office and they're doing the work of the district, they have to look at it from a district level. And not just from, you know, if I'm the high school principal, I'm not just here representing the high school. I'm here as a district administrator with knowledge and expertise about the high school. And so it's really important that that role is fulfilled because everybody above the line has to have that district interest first. Now, the, the last thing I'll say about this before we move on is that and this probably would be designed better if we put two-way arrows, but governance and management have to work together. So a school, uh, one of the activities a board will do every year in June, you have to approve a preliminary budget for the next year. The board has to do it by law. It has to be done by, before July first. Um, but in order for the board to vote on a budget, you've got to understand a lot of things that's happening in management. Even though you're not really controlling it at the board table. But this has to be a great partnership so that when you get handed the recommendation, how many million is your budget? Forty million dollar budget. You've been working in partnership with, um, either the board finance committee, um, the finance director, Jeremy. So that you're aware of what's in it, so that you can take action on it. So it's a, it's a partnership. So let me pause and see if there's any questions.
Let's make a comment about the budget. There, there is some work that we do. The finance committee, uh, he says, if you feel like you're doing superintendent's work, you probably shouldn't be doing it. We do do some, as far as looking at the budget and going through the budget line by line by line, it's down to committee level. So it, it, it's not just taking what Jeremy gives us and approving it. There is some work involved, so.
Yeah. Um, and I didn't mean to misrepresent that, but at the.
So you guys understand.
Yeah. At the board committee level, it's perfectly acceptable to engage in asking management questions. So, you know, Jeremy's got some items in the budget. You might say, how do we know that's going to be successful? Or do we really, are we able to sustain this program for long-term? Or, um, what's the, what's the methodology for implementing? All of those questions are Jeremy's responsibility, but you want to be aware of what they are so that when you're at that table, you can vote. So the finance committee gets to ask questions. Um, the finance committee would offer consultation. Have you thought about this? Um, you know, is there any other ways that we could, we could do this? Those are all appropriate questions, but when you're there, you're focused on your governance action and that's approving the budget. Does that make sense?
So the board itself doesn't make the budget, ask the questions and ultimately approves it.
Yeah.
An admin team will come and say, okay, here's what we're thinking. And then they'll say, well, let's look at this way and have you considered this perspective? And they'll give us parameter. We bring the budget, this is what we're recommending and they'll either give us the, or the, yeah, recommend.
So then the other three ovals, schools, programs, um, parents and public all represent the authority of consultation. So we do governance and management with the consultation of these groups. Um, and that consultation can be, is, is coming from a self-interest perspective. A teacher is going to advocate for their program. Um, a s- uh, school is going to advocate for their school. Parents, of course, are going to advocate for their kids. Um, public without kids are going to advocate for most, most of the time taxes. Right? That's really what's affecting the, the public. There's some more nuanced things about school district and community. That's, that's generally the public's engagement. The oval and the pattern actually does also represent. So if a parent has an issue, we want them first to work with their teacher. Try to resolve it there. If it doesn't get resolved, we want them to work with the principal. That may, if it's not resolved, it may go to an administrator or ultimately to Jeremy. And then if it's truly a hundred percent management-related issue, the buck kind of stops here. Because if it's a management issue and the, the board engages, you're now doing superintendent. That's the part that we have to avoid. But I know Jeremy well enough and I know good practice is that if, if something's coming to me, I'm communicating to my board, letting him know what's happening, what decisions I'm making. The board can always offer consultation, just not direction. So you could, you might even say, you know, as an individual board. So here's another perspective. Here's an idea, here's a thought. But you're not voting up there directing management decision.
Directive, consulting.
Yep. Yep. Are you, you told, you said you were a coach.
Yeah, I was a coach, instructor, professor.
Okay. So you, you're, you may have some knowledge and expertise around some of the things that actually happen in school district. From a professional perspective. So not to utilize that knowledge and expertise in a consultative role would seem foolish. But as, that you just can't take that and make it a directive into the management. Like when I coached football, we did this. I don't know if it's of value, do with it what you want. Versus, I think we need to be doing this. That's a different message. Sometimes when parents have issues, they don't want to do this. They do this. And so boards have to be really good at listening, empathizing, sympathizing and ultimately redirecting so that the problem can be resolved at the appropriate level. Um, I had, I was with the board, um, last week and one of the board members said, well, we want to be, we want to be open to having parents talk to us and telling us our concerns. And I said, it's fine that they're doing that, but you can't step in to resolve it. And then they weren't a hundred percent agreeing. And so I asked the question, well, in your professional life, has any one of, any employee on, below you in the organizational chain go around you to your boss, played about something? Oh yeah, all the time. And how do you like that? Right? Because if a parent goes here and you fix the problem, they've gone around all of this structure and you cut the legs off from underneath all of your teachers and your administrators. And there's no worse feeling to say, I never even got a chance to work on the problem. And lastly, the board has to be united in that redirection. Because if one board member, um, actually steps in, crosses a line, it won't take long for everyone to know, well, we go to that board member to get our problem. And now you have an issue with the board not getting along in full. Any other, any other questions? I feel kind of like this is a lecture, I don't need it to be a lecture. Okay. Well, I, I didn't mention this, that was a big neglect. All of these ovals are working together to deliver on the, what we call the desired daily experiences for students, for families and for students. And so the entire strategic plan that's at, um, Marshall Public Schools is built around, how do we deliver that? And, um, a lot of time and effort went into developing those DDE statements. And the team is constantly looking at, how do we deliver on that for our students, families and staff? Because everybody in their ovals wants what's best. But everyone in the ovals household may have different perspectives. They may come right around. And we'll get to work together to deliver on the desired daily experiences. So boards, school boards have the authority of governance, they're the only ones that have that authority. And there's five roles that they play. One is district policy. So the board develops in partnership with the School Boards Association, um, the district policies that govern the school district. The board is also responsible for looking at operational performance and organizational development. So we talk about the strategic plan. The board should expect reports from the superintendent. How are we doing in our plan? Are we progressing? Where, where are we doing well? Where, where might we need to do something different? The third bullet, boards also govern themselves.
That is good.
But.
I don't know why that went off.
Okay. The board, um, creates policies and structures to govern itself. So how do we function as a board? Um, do we have board committees? Do we have work sessions? Do we, how does an agenda item get from a committee, a work session to the board table for action? As already mentioned, the board is responsible for superintendent relations. It's your one employee. Hire, evaluate, um, if necessary, terminate, your one employee. Everyone else in the organization is hired, um, either through Jeremy or the team. And then the public engagement, the community relations are also part of governance. Generally speaking, we say the board calls for public engagement on whatever topic or issue. And then delegates the administration of that to the superintendent.
Not necessarily involved in it. They gather to have a public engagement about it.
They call for it, yep.
Yeah.
They can be present and listen, but should not engage. Because when you have a, when you have public engagement and you're asking people what they think, you don't want to share what you're thinking. Cause it can impact or influence what they're going to say. So board members, if they come to that, they need to just listen to what folks are saying and not try to have that. Well, I think this. As soon as you say that, Jer- if Jeremy goes to a meeting and he puts his idea on the table first, it's going to be hard for anybody to go, oh, what am I going to do? Go against the superintendent? So those are the five roles and responsibilities for boards. And let's just talk about a few things that really push against that. So we already talked about, A, boards govern, councils manage, and most people don't. So your city council members, um, most likely, the, one of the city council members is the public information officer. So when there's an issue in the city, that person has management responsibilities for communication. Um, a city administrator and a district superintendent have drastically different jobs. They're not the same. The council at a city has more management authority than the governing board at a school district. But most people are familiar with what happens in the city council. So they're looking at you at that table thinking you are the school council. Um, state and federal laws require boards to actively engage in management. So here's a really simple example. By law, a school board has to approve all hiring and terminations.
That's their, that's their engagement, a part of it.
Well, you have.
It really shouldn't be in. Governing, but now you're telling me they're going to engage in management.
They have to by law. And there's really no reason, um, other than the legislators don't understand governance. And so they require school boards to, um, approve all personnel changes, hiring, terminations, um, position changes. And the difficult thing is that the board must meet in public. It's not a public meeting, but it's, they have to meet in public. And when there's a hiring decision up there, you can have almost no conversation about that. Without violating data practices. So you can't ask Jeremy, well, tell us about the reference checks. Tell us about the application. Tell us about the interview process. You can't ask any of that at the table, but yet you're required to vote on.
That's what the perception is, it's rubber stamped when you hire, then it goes to the, it's not the school board yet.
We just get a list, we just get a list every month of everybody that's being hired or let go or advancing.
Or if the board would not, oh, to hire, that's viewed as more of a coup against the superintendent. Like, again, just.
Yep.
It's usually on the consent agenda wrapped up with everything else, so.
And so we, TeamWorks, we advise that if there's places where law mandates that you engage, it goes on the consent agenda. Cause you really can't have conversation, generally speaking, about any of that. Um, staff and parents, they will. Staff and parents, they will pressure the school board to engage in management. Until it no longer serves their interest. And then they complain when their interests aren't served. So as long as it's serving me, I want you to be in the management, but if you're not gonna do that, then I'll complain about it. We have board members that sometimes run on campaigns around management solutions. So true story, I won't tell you what district. Uh, a person ran for the school board and I was uh, district. And their management, their issue was, we're gonna get air conditioning in all the elementary schools. That was their thing. I'm gonna get air, that was his campaign promise. I'm getting air conditioning. Well, there's no way one board member can do that work. You need the whole board. And so. He gets elected. They have the organizational meeting in January, the first business meeting in January. By coincidence. We had brought our um facilities plan to the board for approval. And in there, we had air conditioning for all the elementary schools. So it was coincidence, but now this board member looked at the superintendent and said, what am I gonna do? Eleven months. My issue is done. So the reason why we do this is so that if you're running and you're campaigning. You're not promising something you can't deliver. Because you don't have the ability or the authority to do it as one person. You need your board members to do that. And so that's why we're doing this filing open. Today. That's why we're doing these sessions so that if people run, they know. That I can't promise a management solution. Right? Without working up the entire board. Questions on the forces? So there's some myths about being on the board. The one, that governance is theoretical and optional. Well, governance is theoretical. And actually, it is a choice. There, there isn't governance police driving around the state of Minnesota. Coming in, watching a Marshall School Board meeting and going, well, you're not acting in governance, so here's a governance ticket. They're not doing it. What I can tell you though is that boards that operate with excellence and governance. Reduces chaos and dissonance at the board table. Sets a district up for success. Cause when the board isn't functioning well, that creates dissonance in the organization. Usually will matriculate down to a classroom. And that affects student achievement. So operating with excellence and governance at the table actually sets you up for success to student achievement. Number two, freedom of speech. Um, grants the right for individual opinion even after an act of governance. So. The board members are encouraged for discussion, dialogue, be curious about other positions. But when the board votes, we have seven, right?
Six.
Six. Six oh, five one, or four three, in a direction, the board has spoken. And what we say, we, we, once the board votes, you now have unity of voice. Great discussion. I may not have saw that, that way, but the, the board spoke and this is our. And so board, governing boards don't have minority reports. Other elected officials do. So when the board votes, it's unity of voice. Three, board members can turn off and on their board status. So if you're elected as a board member and you pull up a chair, if you guys have kids in school. The parent teacher conferences and say, don't think of me as a board member tonight. I'm just here as a parent. There's not a staff member in the world that can do that. You always have that hat on. It doesn't mean you don't get to be a parent. But you just have to remember that, that teacher is watching what you're doing. How you're looking at them, what kinds of questions you're asking, how you're asking your questions, what your body posture. They're making up all these stories just because you are a board member. And intellectually, they could know that you don't have authority to hire and fire them. But it doesn't matter. You're still seen as the boss. Um, you guys are all at large, correct? So there are districts that actually have um. Uh, precincts or wards. And there are people that think, when I get elected, I'm elected from my precinct, serve my precinct. And actually, the oath of office that you take says that if you're elected to the school board, you serve everyone. Doesn't matter where you come from. Um, and so it's really important to know that you don't represent a part portion of the community. There, it's a bipartisan school board. There's no um political affiliation at that table. Doesn't mean you can't have it elsewhere, but it's not at that table. Um, some believe that public ed, is, uh, people in public ed are less competent or qualified than other professions. Um, Matthew, are you the number one employer? In Marshall, in terms of size?
We're in the top ten, but we're not above ten. We got Schwann's corporate.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
ADM in the hospital and.
So most, most school districts, the, uh, most community school districts are in the top three or four. So that role at that board, you're functioning as one of the top employers in your community. And, you know, this isn't like it's um, you know, a tiny little business, getting to doing what they want. You're a major employer. And so people look at the board um to see how they act and behave. Um, six public ed runs better, would run better if it was like a business. It's impossible. It's not a business. School districts are a creature of the legislature. There's very little that you have flexibility to do and legislature controls almost everything. I had a guy that was in Rotary with me when I was in a. And um, every Tuesday morning at seven o'clock, I got to hear his ideas for how we could improve our school district. And so I'd spend forty minutes talking with him and saying, I can't do that by law. I can't go into a, an employee agreement and just say, teachers were not gonna give you benefits now. You know, the things that he was, you just can't do. There, we're so handcuffed by what happens with the legislature that we aren't a business. So those are myths about serving on a school board. Any, any uh questions or?
What role does the unions have in all this? As far as, you know, representation.
Well, um, unions are not part of a school district. They represent your employees. Um, that line gets blurred a lot. And um. You know, years ago, school districts actually funded, depending on your school size. Uh, a person in the union to work inside the organization to help with union. Labor relations. And it, you know, at the time, it was against the law, but nobody ever. Challenged it. It, it has been challenged now, and so that doesn't happen. But a union is a separate five oh one C three entity. And so they represent your employees, but they're not part of the district. And so they need to be treated as such. You still communicate with them, you still work with them. But you don't have to run things by them. You don't have to run things by the union to do your work. Um, and there's a lot of. Superintendents and boards think that they are handcuffed. They can't do anything unless the union gives it a blessing. Now, you try to work together. You wanna, you wanna have contribution. Their role is in um negotiations and employee, you know, challenge, employee personnel issues. They're representing employees. I don't know if I did answer the question.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, it's, yes. Exactly. They're really just in, they're irrepresentative to enforce labor laws.
And there's a really good relationship with the teachers you. And so I regularly meet with the EA president and say, hey, you need to know this is coming down the pike. And he might say, hey, I want you. Help me understand this so I can end it off, so I can understand why they do that. So that relationship has been good. That helps a lot with that.
Yep.
I've lived in five different states, so. All different every state.
Any other comments, questions, wonderings?
How available, easy to understand is it um, know what a board can and more importantly, cannot do?
Well, um, it takes a lot of work onboard and it really takes a year. Be honest. I mean, you've gotta go, school districts are very cyclical. It's almost like you gotta have an experience of that full year and you're just constantly learning as you go. Um, MSBA does, does, does offer some training to newly elected board members. So you get a little bit on the front end. But really, the administration helps with help of other board members, onboard board members. In terms of what's happening in the school district, um, getting acclimated for. But it really takes a while to kind of learn it all. It'll feel like a fire hose for a while.
So what would happen once you're, say you're elected onto the board? Um, we'll assign you a board mentor. So one of the other board members would be assigned to be your buddy and, you know, touch base with things. Um, I'll schedule, I don't remember how long it is. It's like. We have days or something like that. Where you come in, you meet with me for a while. You meet with each of the principals, you meet with directors. You can get an update of. This is how this piece of the district runs. And then there's regular training like where you mentioned from MSBA. And then there's an annual conference from MSBA that we all go to and that sort of thing. So it is spread out throughout the whole year.
And then we, we do, um, we do a lot of training with boards. You know, we do summer retreats. We do. If a board wants to work on, um, well, Marshall's got a school handbook, but we've done that work in other districts where we help facilitate those processes. So there's a lot of opportunity for learning, but it. You don't, uh, you don't wanna take your, your board salary and divide by your hours. To figure out what your hourly rate of Matthew. It's not a good number you wanna know, right? Um, okay, so administration has the authority in management and they have six roles. Um, once the board approves the budget, then it's up to the administration to allocate the resources of the schools, the programs. Um. I've had board members that get elected that think they're going to affect student achievement. And I'll tell you right now, board members and superintendents don't affect student achievement. They affect the conditions to help with student achievement. But many, many of my colleagues get into the superintendent and think they are the super teacher. And there's less about teaching and learning in the office of the superintendent. More about removing barriers, creating structures, um, providing formatting so that we can be student achievement. But a board member or a board isn't gonna have direct impact. Indirect impact. That's usually a surprise to people. Principal is the primary instructional. And so, um, and we talked about this when we did planning. One of the things that. We have to do as leaders in the district is make sure they have time to be the instructional leader. The principal is tied up in management all the time. They can't be in classrooms working with. Um, performance management, professional development. Continuous improvement, which is part of what the district is, they adopted the strategic planning process. So every year. District's operational plan is updated. So every year, it's a fresh plan, new plan. Um, and part of that continuous improvement cycle. When the board approves a policy, then the administration develops the procedures and practices implemented. That's another great place where that partnership occurs. So the board adopts a policy, Jeremy and the team develop a procedure. They communicate, say, here's how we're gonna implement the policy. Even though the board doesn't vote on practices and procedures, your awareness of how it's being implemented. Helps you make best decisions on policy. And then the, also the management is responsible for community relations as well.
Just a comment on our strategic planning. Before we went to raise team, we had a five-year strategic plan. And we'd work on a couple of things each year. A lot of times, by the time we got to the second or third year, the things we were working on. Buying anymore, you know, as far as tech, especially technology, that changes so fast. With, with Teamworks way of doing things, we update it every year. We still have a three-year plan, but, but it can be changed every year, so. Has really helped, helped Jeremy and all of us, I think, so.
And then you're not incurring the big cost to do a comprehensive process every three to five years. You. We've did it. We provide the system and then Jeremy and the team lead it. Um, forces that push against excellence in management. So staff that operate in isolation, that can push against management. Um, collective bargaining agreements that give up. Actually, the past legislative, uh. For twenty twenty-three legislative session, actually put in some laws about. Um, some things that usually were off the table for negotiations now have to be on the table for discussion. But generally, you don't give your managerial rights. To an independent organization that's not part of your school district, i.e. the union. So you have managerial rights for a reason, and so we don't give them up to outside groups. Um. Another thing that can happen that pushes against excellence in management is you're quitting lawsuits at all costs. We live in a society, people are gonna sue or threaten to sue no matter what. So you can't be limited by always afraid, you know, taking the safe road and making sure you're not gonna sue. Cause somebody could sue you even if you're trying to do the right thing. Um. D has really been common the last, I don't know, five, six years. It's kind of exploded that everything should be one hundred percent transparent. As a matter of fact, I, personal editorial opinion, I can't stand the word transparency. It tells me nothing. So when you have someone in the public that comes to the table and, and says, we need you as a board to be more transparent. I don't know what that means. What are you not getting that you think you should get? And unless somebody gives you that information, transparency, I could spend all day giving you data and information. There's all kinds of data that exists in the school district. But I wanna know about the teacher that got, did they get disciplined for doing some action in the classroom? Well, that I can't tell you anyway by law. Because that's a, that's a person, private personnel data. So then they think you're not being transparent because you can't share it, but by law, I can't share. Same thing with student information. Right? Was that kid that was in my, my kid's class, was he disciplined for their behavior? I can't tell you. I can tell you, we followed our practices and protocols, but I can't tell you any outcomes by law. Not that I don't want to. It's by law. And attorneys will tell you, you violate data practices law. Knowingly or willingly violate that law, that's generally a million dollar law. And you can't defend it. So there was a, there was a case in a mental school district where a board member. Superintendent said too much about a personnel issue to calm the waters. They got sued and lost. One million bucks. And in school districts, do you know where that comes from to pay that? It's from taxpayers. So it's not covered by insurance. So it's a big deal to protect data. And it's frustrating to the public because they think you're hiding stuff. It's thirteen D, right? Thirteen D, it's a public, I think so.
Yeah.
If you, I think it's, I think it's Minnesota statute thirteen D and there's several sub statutes. It tells you exactly what you can and cannot share. Um. Another force that pushes against excellence in management is staff that operate out of time and not outcomes. And what that means is that. It doesn't matter where you get from a performance standpoint. At the end of third grade, you go to. That's operating out of time and not outcomes. So if I've only learned half of third grade, do I really? With half the knowledge? And so that can also push against operating with excellence in management. And we have some myths that go along management as well. Um, principals implementing change to the degree their staff agrees with change. That's a myth. You got to be able to make change. Staff that, um, in the consultation role, the staff's job is to resist change. Push back to make sure that it's been well thought up and that, well thought out and that we have a good plan. Not necessarily that they have to agree with it. Um, two classes of employees, teachers and everyone else, half the employees in the school district are. Almost every district's fifty fifty. And that surprises a lot of people. They think it's eighty percent teachers or ninety percent teachers, but it's, it's actually half and half. And I'm assuming I'm right about there, pretty close. Staff not, um, we talked about number three, employees are union members first, employees second. That's a myth, their employees first. Um, staff not accountable for student learning is a myth. And, um, another one that pushes against, um, this is staff loyalty first themselves becomes, comes before accountability to the school. So those, you got forces and myths that kind of push against excellence in management, excellence in governance. And so part of our work then is how do we work through that to push against the forces and reduce the mess? So that was a lot, that was a big one. Questions, wonderings, thoughts? You know, when you don't ask questions, I assume I'm a master teacher, so thank you.
Teacher right now, yes. Doing well.
Um, the same thing exists for consultation and engagement. Um, those in those roles, the only ones that have that role. And when you have a parent or a staff member or a student advocating for themselves, don't be surprised, that's their, that's their job. Staff especially assess risks and merits of options in the decision-making process. Most, most staff know that they can't make the decisions. They just want to be part of the process. And what that really means is they want to be able to share their perspective, know how it was considered. And did it influence a decision? And if it didn't influence the decision, why or why not? That's all staff really care about. They say they want to be part of the decision making process, but they really want to be able to have their voice heard, considered, and know the outcome to close the loop. Those that reasonably resist or oppose change and then provide input to management and governance for that work. And then we have forces that push against. So parents that move beyond advocacy, set expectations, making demands on behalf of their child as if this was a private business. Jeremy and administration serves the entire school population. The board represents the entire school population and community population, not a individual interest. And, and I know Jeremy feels this way. If, as educators, we would love to have many resources as needed to give kids everything they possibly could be successful. But we have finite resources and infinite need. And so you're always prioritizing. So you can't get into the single issue, um, things for some parents. Um, forces that push when you don't have decision-making processes that are open. And so, so, uh, did you facility study with that, how many years ago was that?
That was six years ago. Probably closer to five or six.
So the district went through a comprehensive facility study, but it was open. It was, people were reporting on it, there was a committee that went through the process. Everything that they were doing when they looked at, um, was being considered. It was an open process. It's not required. The board in a work session and Jeremy and his team could have got together and developed a plan and they could have executed it. But if you don't bring your public along on those big issues, you will lose that, that trust that you build with them, what's happening. C, um, D, management governance, often disregard consultation as well. In the leadership realm, so I'm going to take off my consulting hat, put my superintendent hat back on. How we managed is that we partnered when we should. So we try to, much as possible, partner with our team, partner with our, um, staff. We try to do that about seventy percent of the time and there's a way to do partnership. But there's times where you have to manage when one must. And about thirty percent of the time, you just got to make a decision. You got to use the best information to decide. I don't know if you guys have ever gone through building a house, this best metaphor I have. When I'm designing and building a house, I'm asking people for their opinion on the size of the room, the color of the siding, the single styles, the house style, I'm getting a lot of input because we're all going to live here. If there's a fire, I'm getting my family out. I'm not going to stop and ask my twelve year old what they think is the best evacuation route in the middle of a fire. I'm going to manage when one must. And there are days where superintendent has to manage when one must. But if you partner thirty percent of the time, your, um, self-interest groups, your parents, your public, students and staff, when you manage, they get it. You're just navigating an issue. Make sense? Myth about consultation, people who aren't providing will. There are people in the public that you have to go seek their. Most school districts, when they open up the doors to the public to a meeting, school board meeting or, uh, come tell us about this issue, you get very little attendance. But when people's lives are just so busy now, it's hard for them to come in. Depending on their experience with the school, when they were in school, they may not want to come back in school. So you've got to work to get that input. And the challenge, um, for board members is that there are some that will seek you out, believe it or not. And you have to acknowledge that perspective, but understand that you're not getting a community voice. You're getting who you're having coffee with, who is, you're calling you on the phone. Um, so it's, I caution board members to say, when they say things like, well, the community is in an uproar over this. A few people might be in an uproar over it. That's who you had coffee with or that's who you had breakfast with, but it doesn't mean the community is. You have to seek out the community's perspective. Um, public knows about education, we all went to school. But going to school and being a teacher or administrator are drastically. Another myth is people think all their input and feedback need to be fully adopted. So I've been doing, um, for whatever reason, a lot of boundary changes, uh, in some suburban districts. So multiple elementary schools, they're redoing their attendance boundaries around those schools. And, um, believe it or not, parents don't embrace that change. Right? I moved here for a reason. And, but the process that we involve is much like what Jeremy and the district facilities process is open. We're listening. And so every time we put a new option out, people could see like, wait, they made a change because they listened to us. It's not that we did all of their feedback, but we did listen, we made some iterations. And so we got to the end of the process, I've done three of these now, comprehensive changes. And all but one meeting, there was no one even in attendance, board meeting when they approved it. Because they felt valued and heard, they saw what was happening. Um, and we got to make sure that emotion doesn't override data. So comments, questions, scenarios?
How do you, so how do you answer the question as a consultant? And in saying, uh, myths is, school is not run like a private. Consultant, are you a private?
As a consultant, I'm a private company.
Consulting in public school. I understand your background, I'm just being the devil's advocate. Why would we pay taxpayer monies, monies to do that? Besides the experience.
So to say that.
So you're using, you're, you're in a private role right now, right? But you're working in a public school.
Yep.
Like you said, and I totally agree with you, public, public schools aren't like a private entity. Why would we get help from a private entity?
When I'm not trying to make school district a business. So we operate a business so that we can consult with our knowledge and expertise. Um, specific, I can't talk about any other firm, but our firm, with our consultants, we have three hundred and eighty-five years' experience of sitting in public schools. All different shapes and sizes, superintendents, communications. So we're offering that knowledge and expertise, but we're not taking our business practices and saying, Marshall, you guys got to do this. Because we get how schools run, but we have to be, uh, in order for us to run a business to consult and provide that service, we have to be a private business.
No, it makes perfect sense to me, I'm just, you know, you would get that question. Why are we spending taxpayer dollars to bring somebody into a private setting? Even though you have public, I understand that, but.
Yeah. And, and I think, and Jeremy can weigh in on this too. You know, the circle of educators is vast. So we're not the only source of stuff that comes to Marshall. Jeremy's got superintendent colleagues, we go to, we used, as a super, I'd go to conferences. And there's constantly looking outside sources. Um, but there's times where school districts say, we need an outside person to give us different perspective to facilitate a process. Um, there, Jeremy could have facilitated the strategic planning process. There's nothing that I did that he couldn't do. But as soon as he does, he's not a participant. And when we did it, he got to be an active participant, he didn't have to facilitate. So there's a, you know, there's a value, I think, in that.
No, I, yeah, I agree with this. It's always a question.
I think one of the answers I would give to that, if someone comes and asks, is we always want to learn and grow, we can be. I know Marshall, but I don't know what else is out there. So you bring someone in, you know, just like you would in any other business. Okay, tell me what else is that, how we can, as we can with this. That was a big part with the strategic planning specifically is talk about how we can best plan for our future. Conversations that way.
We also use the Minnesota School Board, MSBA, that he's referenced quite a few times. They're a great resource, I've called them for different things. They have lawyers, they have finance people, they have payroll people, they have all kinds of people to do anything you need, so. Great resource.
And I, I think the other thing that is provided too, and I don't know if MSBA does, but I know we do this all the time. If Jeremy calls me and has a question about, uh, something, and maybe I don't even know how to give him any advice, but I know so and so in a different district's done it, so I match the two. I do the same thing with boards. I get board members that will call me and ask for advice and say, you know, I don't know if I have the best advice, but there's a chair in this district that's willing to. So we kind of help do that too, we're not, some of those are connectors.
Definitely.
I know, you expect consultants to know it all, but I don't know it all.
No, I've, I've sat on a city council again, which is different.
Oh, you have.
We've, you know, brought in somebody to hire a town cap consultants. A lot of grief about it. Those are hard questions to answer. Like it's tough. How the hell does, how the hell do you know when it's like, uh, whatever in Marshall, you don't live here. You know, just stuff like that, so that's why. It's good to be able to throw, have a whole spiel.
Got a call from a neighboring district asking about you, so.
Oh.
I mean, your people, so.
Well, and I think in our, in our world, there's two things we do. We facilitate process and we consult from expertise. And we, you know, I did a lot of facilitation on the strategic planning. But it was only when I was asked to step into a consultative role, that's when I provided my background. And it's hard for superintendents not to share their experience, so I really got to stay focused on what my role is. So there are two sides of what we do as well. Good question though. But I would also tell you, I was a business manager. You should ask the ROI. You should ask the return on investment.
For sure.
So if we're going to spend this, how are we going to measure our return on investment? And that is, that is a, uh, management question that boards should ask. Because the board's not approving the contract or you're asking Jeremy, how do we know? How are we going to measure our return? Um, and sometimes it's not all hard costs or hard savings. Sometimes it's, you know, it's hard to put a price tag on culture. And so something helps improve a culture. There's value there, it's just not saving money.
Yeah, maybe it's retention, maybe it's whatever we, coming up with for markers.
Good questions. How about you, any questions or wonderings?
What does the role of a board member look like outside of the meeting where you're asking the direct questions and votes? What would that role look like?
Do you want to talk about that? You mean as far as in the public eye?
As far as being a board member, what does that all entail?
Outside of the two meetings.
Outside of the meetings that we have.
So there's two a month?
Two a month, yeah.
And then we have committee, we have, what, three standing committees right now? And they, they don't meet monthly, a lot of them meet as needed.
Quarterly, they're scheduled.
And then, uh, we get the agenda, usually the Thursday or Friday before the Monday meeting. Go through all that information. Other things. I'm on an email, I'm on an email list for different educational organizations, just keeping, keeping up on what's going on in education. You know, that's other things that I do outside, so.
Attend events when you can?
Yeah, I attend a lot of events.
It's not required, but you know, the public and the staff like to see you.
Written expectation that you're attending events. They, people notice. Um, if there's something big going on in the district, um, then there's phone calls. You know, Matt, probably more than the others because he's board chair, so he'll get a call or I'll text board members and say, hey, I need you to know this is going on. And if I hit the high school today, there are three squad cars there at the end of the day. Looked a lot worse than it was, you're going to get questions, you know?
Jeremy's very good at letting us know if something like that happened because we will get questions about it, so.
Can I help you?
I hope so.
Okay. Other questions?
Well, um, I know sometimes when I leave, um, that's when I have my best thinking and I'm driving home. So you have my contact information. Teamwork, who was a lawyer? No, we, we don't function like lawyers. So if you have a question about something I said or wondering about anything else. Um, we do ten minute, fifteen minute calls all the time.